Good evening and welcome to the September 17th meeting of the Milton School Committee. I call the meeting to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. You're over there. You're over there. I think you're over there.
You're here.
We can pass.
You don't have to be here.
Yeah, great. The first item up is to approve the September, the agenda for the meeting. Do we have any changes? The only thing that I know is that for the, for item B, the review and approval of Milton Subcommittee and Advisory Committees, it will just be a discussion, not a vote tonight.
Oh, okay.
And then, and I think that was the only thing that I had. Does anybody else have any changes? If not, we have approval? Great. All right. We will start as we do. We have public comment. In accordance with school committee policy, we welcome members of the community to share their perspectives with us during public comment. We have set aside up to 15 minutes for this part of the meeting, and individuals may speak for up to three minutes. While the school committee does not respond directly to public comment, there may be opportunities for members to address issues that are raised over the course of the meeting when relevant topics are on our agenda. We strive to engage in respectful discourse during our meetings and ask that public comments speakers keep that in mind. Speakers should introduce themselves for their record. So there is nobody here in the room, and I don't know if there is anybody online who's here for public comment. If you are, could you raise your hand?
No hands.
Nope, no hands. All right. Seeing no one, we will move on. The next agenda is, the item is, as I moved my agenda all around, is the Chair's Report, and we will be starting with reviewing the discussion and approval of the 25, 26 school committee goals. So we discussed them last week. We agreed to split off into a smaller subgroup, edit those, and then share them back out with everybody for any individual comments. And then we would review them today. We can still obviously tweak if there's any minor wordsmithing that needs to be done, but the goal is to review those and get those approved today. So Mark is putting up the draft, and this is available for people to see or know. Mark?
Yes, this is being screen shared right now.
Great. So thank you, Nathan. He was very helpful in editing these. So we stuck with the same categories that we had, just went through and just, as we said, kind of really tried to wordsmith them. So do you want to just read through them? Does it help to read through it, or just have everybody read through it on their own?
They look good to me. The only small edit, wordsmithing edit, I think it's a wordsmithing edit, is number one, instead of MCAS competency determination requirements, I think I thought was, it was like high school
High school.
graduation and competency determination requirements. And then that looks, the wording looks good.
Do you want me to write? Yeah, do you mind? Yep. Like that. Anything else?
Do you guys want to read this, just in case people are listening on the radio?
Sure, we can read through it.
The podcast, and they don't have the words in front of it.
So the first one is to ensure rigorous and equitable education for Milton students. Regularly evaluate progress towards FY26 teaching and learning priorities, including facilitating selection of a new K-5 ELA curriculum, and monitoring district progress on high school graduation and competency determination requirements. The second one is to steward taxpayer resources and sustain core services, manage FY26 to a balanced budget, and develop an FY27 budget that advances district priorities in partnership with town boards and the Milton community. Number three is to create a welcoming, equitable district where every student and staff member thrives, embed DEIB across all school committee governance work. Number four is to maintain stable operations and productive labor relationships, negotiate timely and fiscally responsible successor agreements with all relevant collective bargaining units. And number five is to build trust in a positive district culture and climate, engage the community proactively and consistently. So these tie in with the superintendent's goals, as well as the goals that they align with them, and then the goals.
I'll make a motion to approve the Milton School Committee goals for 2025, 2026.
A second? I'll second. All in favor? Great. That was quick. Excellent.
Thank you for your work on that.
Thanks. Thanks, Nathan. Thanks, everyone. The next item is to review and approve the Milton School Committee Subcommittee and Advisory Committees. So we, I shared with you an email that we had gotten regarding the Climate Action Committee, and that the person who had applied for that was selected from, like, asked to apply through another channel, through another board, to that action committee, and the hope was that we would get somebody who was interested in the schools and had an understanding of the climate action priorities. To date, we don't have anybody, but the Chair of the Climate Action Planning Committee had suggested that he would be comfortable waiting until we had the appropriate person who had that interest and experience. And I'm glad that he wants to wait, because we don't have anybody else in the folder right now. So that one, we can wait. The second thing is we got an application today that I put in the folder for the, oh my gosh. I always forget the name of this, the committee, the
Budget Coordination.
Budget Coordination Committee. I always want to call it the Tri-Board. The Budget Coordination Committee. So we had an application in there, which included the resume and their application. So since we're all just seeing it today, doesn't make sense to vote on it, but if there's any comment or discussions about that candidate, we can open the floor to that.
So we're discussing the candidate today and voting on the application next time?
We could vote on it next time, yeah. We have vote in the agenda. I just felt like since everybody just got it today, but if
I haven't fully reviewed it yet.
Yeah, that's fine. I didn't think so, because it came in late. So just, I don't know if there is question or comments or discussion on it today. Again, like I said, it just came in the folder this afternoon. If not, then we can hold off on that, any discussion around it.
I, I mean, if we want to discuss a little bit, we can. I'm happy to share an opinion, which is, I think, this, avoiding the person's name? Okay. In their application, I think they make a case for, you know, an interest in this work, following, following school committee meetings and select board meetings, strong interest in municipal finance and budgetary analysis, involved in Milton's education systems in different ways, and has a professional background that's relevant. So I'm, I would be supportive of this person being on the committee.
Me too, based on same.
Yeah, and I think also just, they've been actively involved in, I think you were saying this, but actively involved in volunteer positions within the town, as well as town government, which I think is great. So they're coming in with an understanding of it. And the finance experience is big.
Yeah.
Anyone else? No further discussion. We can let people review this more carefully, and then we can add this to an agenda item for, for the next meeting. Do you want to, for facility, would we, do we want to wait for facilities to do the vote for that?
However.
We can wait, because then we can do the
Yes.
Yeah.
I am still screen sharing.
All right. So that will go on the next agenda, for agenda item on our next meeting. The next thing we were doing on the agenda is to discuss option to pursue additional one-year waiver for the interim superintendent. So this, the idea of offering interim superintendent Phelan an additional, or looking at exploring an additional one-year term came up during our retreat. Since then, I think we've all had time to see the work that he's doing, see, I think also we've gotten greater insight still to the amount of work that needs to be done in the coming year. And so this idea of looking to extend his, the one-year contract for an additional one-year contract, given, came up, and so that what we've been doing since then is exploring what that would take to do that. So we've reached out to the MASC and the MASSS. It's not, it's not unprecedented to do it, but it's also not common. It's not something that happens all the time to extend for an interim one-year contract.
For a retiree.
For a retiree, yes. It's getting a waiver for that. So I think that our, the place where we are is that we've, you know, we've had a couple of years of instability. We are on our sixth superintendent in five years. As he's getting into the work further, we're recognizing the need to reestablish and reaffirm some of the processes and procedures. So we really feel like, as a community, as a school committee, as a district, having an additional year of stability is the right way to go. So what we would need to do is, we would have to write a letter of appeal to Desi, to the Commissioner, as well as the board that approves this, stating our case, and sort of stating the extenuating circumstances under which we're looking to add one year. So that, that is what we would like to do. In order to do that, we need to get the board's approval, that that's the path that we would like to take. So if we want to discuss that, if people have any concerns or questions about that, we can discuss that. We can discuss what it takes. We have, as I said in this letter, we've been given permission to say that we have the support of the MASC and the MASSS in this, in pursuing this additional year waiver, which I think is, which is great and very helpful, and they're willing to do what they can to support us in this. So I don't know if there's any questions or discussion around that, or if everybody's comfortable with that.
Well, Amanda, I just appreciate the work you've been doing to, on our behalf, to sort of explore these, the situation, and to connect with MASC and MASSS to get their input. And personally, I, I don't feel any differently from when we first discussed this in August at our retreat. If anything, I've, with what we've learned since then, as we've seen Superintendent Phelan launch this year, and also as we've come to even greater understanding of sort of where we're at, and the work that we're needing to do to stabilize the district, which was the goal that we initially discussed with an interim superintendent in the first place, but then even first broaching this idea of a potential extension for a second interim year. I mean, I personally just feel as strongly, if not more strongly, that this is what makes sense with the ultimate goal of ensuring that the next permanent superintendent of the district has a really solid chance at being successful. So that's what I'm staying focused on, and to me, this is very much worth exploring. So that's, that's how I feel about it. I'm in favor of pursuing this. I understand it's not a guarantee. And so I think the sooner we can, if this is something that we agree we want to pursue, the sooner we can do that, the better, so that we understand, like, what our options actually are.
I agree.
So is it that line when we have to send this appeal letters in?
Is there what?
Is it that line for when we need to send this appeal letter?
No, I think it's just to Lizzie's point, the sooner we send it, the sooner we have an indication of which way they would go.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think it's just, and then just recognizing now that we want to do that, understanding that if there was a Plan B, then we would want to start thinking about that sooner than later.
Yeah.
Do we have any sense of how long we, does MASC have any guidance on how long they think it would take the board to get back to us and give us some certainty around this? I'm just wondering, because obviously when we talked to MASC about just the superintendent, permanent superintendent search process, so that conversation was like, well, you start in the summer to establish the process, and by now we were doing, I forget exactly what, but we'd be at least a little bit into that. And so I think for me, the worst-case scenario is missing, somehow like this does not work out, for whatever reason, the board does not allow it, right? The waiver is not possible. And then we end in a scenario where we're too late to search for a permanent superintendent, or the pool is really poor, and then we have to have a different interim superintendent for another, like, that would be awful. So I guess like more, is there, is there more discussion on like what the Plan B is, and like what is the kind of ripcord kind of timeline to say, like, we just, we need to move forward with a process to try and get good candidates?
They did not indicate a timeline when we spoke. I don't remember Glenn saying anything. I think, go ahead, were you going to say something?
Well, I think there's two different paths for a Plan B. I mean, one Plan B path is still to explore additional time with Superintendent Phelan, just not under a waiver, if the waiver were not to be approved. And there are ways that we've seen retirees, you know, be employed. It just, it's a, it's a matter of the level of compensation that they're allowed to have. So I think one Plan B would be, you know, to think about that piece with him.
Right.
And I think there are various ways that, you know, that, that that could look. So that's a parallel path that probably needs to be explored. And then the other Plan B would be, like you're saying, the need to just pivot and do a search and you know, one thing I was thinking about, to be totally honest, just to put out there is if that, if we were to arrive at a place where we needed to do that, which I agree would be, like, not a good scenario. That would only be if Plan A and then Plan B with Superintendent Phelan were not going to work. Then I think at that point, it would maybe make sense to also consider all of our options for a search, including not necessarily working with MASC, if there's a firm that's better equipped to, like, really manage a, an efficient and like really rigorous search. But that problem with that is budget, obviously, and we don't have a budget to work with a firm. But I think that that's something that we should explore. I mean, I feel like if we were appealing to the Commissioner outside, because there's no deadline, because this is just, this is us, you know, essentially seeking for an exception to be made, which I think is possible to make that case, given, as you said, six superintendents in five years. A new permanent superintendent next year would be our seventh superintendent in six years. So to me, that's an extenuating circumstance that should be like feasible to explain as a rationale. But I think that we would be looking for MASC and MASSS to help us get that message through to the Commissioner, to be able to, like, get a quick response, because I would imagine he should understand, or his staff should understand that, like, time is of the essence for us to work. So I don't know what to expect reasonably, but if you're going to work with those MASSS, MASC through a channel to like
Yes.
help have their advocacy supporting us, then
Right.
I feel like it should be
Relatively timely.
Right. It should be
Right.
right away, that we should be able to
Right.
get some indication.
Right. Like, we'd like to send out the letter, you know, started working on it, you know, with the hopes that this would go forward, if it doesn't, obviously, didn't, obviously. But the goal would be to get the letter out ideally by the end of the week, or at the latest, the beginning of next week, and then, as I said, we've gotten the support from MASSS to say that we
Yeah, or the following.
Maybe the following. I think it's, I think that's something we could ask as a follow-up to that. But to Lizzie's point, I think then we do follow that parallel path for Plan B, so that we be, you know, we, we know sort of what that looks like, and worst-case scenario, it's Plan C.
So Amanda, if the, if we agree to pursue this, what, what would be the process for the letter? Like, as far as the committee approving the direction, but then
Right, I guess
around the letter itself?
So we could draft the letter, I think, since the, the committee is, since it's coming from the Milton School Committee, I would assume that we would get a draft and share it with the committee, and then individually share feedback on that to me, and then get it out. Like I said, that's probably more realistic than if we're, if we're getting everybody's feedback to get it out early next week. But that would be, because obviously, if everybody's name is being signed to it, I want everybody to have seen it and be comfortable with it. So I think tonight would be vote to approve the direction. We draft the letter, we share it with the rest of the committee, we get feedback and approval, it goes out, and then that kind of starts the clock.
Will MASC review the letter and give us input on it?
We could ask them to. We walked through what the content should be.
Okay.
I mean, you know, we talked about, we, we shared our story. They said that's a very compelling story. Those are the details that you need to include. But, you know, we could get their input on it.
The, as I understand it, just reading about this today, the waiver is for, it's a critical shortage waiver, right? Is that the waiver that we're operating under here? So we have to demonstrate that there's a
Shortage.
critical shortage of viable superintendents, I assume in the letter. Which I think, the fact that we have had seven superintendents in six years, or whatever the number is, I think is a, is an important data point to, to help prove that out. But I think having either MASSS or MASC review it with that lens could be useful.
I, I agree. I think the thing to keep in mind, though, is, how do I put it? We're looking for a waiver, but we aren't necessar, we're, we're trying to not have to go through the process of looking again, opening up the search, because then to go through the process of looking again, opening up the search, because then we are just
Right.
Negating what we've said, which is, you know, we're opening up to the opportunity that we would have our seventh superintendent in a short amount of time, and then somebody else coming in
Also interim.
An interim and coming in and starting again. Right, so
That would not work.
So it's like, we are, yes, we're talking about that waiver process and, and that there's, to your point, the shortage, but it's more the fact that we are looking for stability and not, it's not that we're looking for yet another candidate, it's that we feel like the district needs stability and keeping the same person here for all of the reasons that we stated. So it's sort of, it's nuanced, I know what you're saying, but it's, we are requesting that waiver, but we're requesting to not have to open it up
Yeah.
Because we found that person already. But I, and I do think with that lens, it, it would be helpful for them to read it and just say, yes.
Are we asking them to extend the existing waiver or issue a new one? Do we know?
To extend it.
Yeah, to extend it, I would say.
But typically only extend in a six-month increment, that's part of the challenge. And so I think it would be asking for something more than they typically do, which would essentially a commitment to, like say that they understand the rationale for extending it through next year, even though like we're not there yet, we're, it's not yet June, you know, we were going through this process in June last year, or this year. So I think, yeah, I think it's just about, I mean, the commissioner, like the commissioner's role is to ensure the success of all the districts in Massachusetts. I think we just have to help it be understood that like, you know, we sought an interim superintendent for the sake of bringing stability to this district, and what we've realized is that it will take more than one year to achieve that stability, given what we've been through as a district, and that we have someone here now who's equipped to see that through. And that was when we went through the critical shortage process last, last spring, in which we did consider candidates, who, including people who are not retired. That's, you know, the process that we went through, and there were some very strong candidates. And, you know, Superintendent Phelan just did have that additional level of experience, especially that was relevant to our district because of his community having been similar to Milton, and also having been through similar, you know, challenges that we face around the override, the school building project and whatnot. So that all added up, not to mention that he happens to have worked here previously, and like he therefore has that familiarity. So I'd like to think the commissioner would
Right.
Share our sense that this makes logical, like, sense to continue the interim, like it would be premature to go out like this month to try to attract a really strong candidate to come in here, and I just would really love for whomever joins as our next permanent superintendent to be someone who stays here.
Right.
You know, and really like has a sustained and successful tenure. And it's not, there's just so much that still needs to get resolved through the processes that have been set in motion.
Right.
It just has to be seen through. And we've heard him talking about how he's doing that, prepared to do that. So that's why I don't need to like keep, just, but I do think it's very helpful and important for the community to, to sort of understand like all the different considerations, because it is a big decision.
Right.
But I think we just have to like go for it, you know? If it doesn't work, we'll have to figure out what, what else we can do.
Did you say worries?
No, I mean, I agree with a lot of what Lizzie said. I think, yeah, my, my concern is just on the, if it doesn't go for it, like us just being clear on what is that timeline, because I just, we, we can't put the district in a situation where we have another interim, a non-John Phelan interim superintendent for next year. I don't think we have the bench, right? Like if, if it would be another thing, too, if we had some consistency over a number of years within the assistant superintendent role, and like John could help support that person, like even take over as a permanent, like we just have no bench behind this. We've had so much churn within those roles. And so, you know, I think we either need, I think either solution of like we, you know, extend John, and I was a little more hesitant of that plan, more people I've just talked to were, just like it is overwhelmingly kind of positive. It's not a scientific survey or anything, but everybody I've talked to just overwhelmingly positive on like how they're feeling about things this year versus prior years. And so that, that gives me more, more hope in this as being kind of the right path for, again, another year. I do think that the downside of this that just needs to be said is it delays any long-term view of systemic improvement for the district, just because, as John has said with us in meeting, like he is not here, and so he is stabilizing and laying a foundation, but he's just not able to engage in processes that are, would necessitate kind of a three-year time horizon. And there's a lot of just structural improvement things that require that type of time horizon. We obviously have other good people in instruction roles who are not just going to sit on their hands, but like from that top-down kind of viewpoint of this is what it means to teach at Milton, this is what it means to learn in Milton, like that is just something I don't think even John being the best interim superintendent ever, he's not going to be able to do, just because he, his time will sunset. And so totally like, but we need, we need a person who will be here and will stay. And so I, I do hear the, the feelings that as much progress as maybe John has done these last couple of months, still the idea of bringing in somebody else into this in October to say like, hey, we're all kind of set here, we're ready for our next superintendent, like that feels very soon. And it's honestly sad that we are at that place, that we actually need a whole nother year of this.
But, okay, so also though, I think, you know, he had, given everything you just said, he, he has also indicated, you know, that he's not just sitting
Yeah.
Accepting the status quo. He's very much like driving the focus on teaching and learning in the classrooms and making sure that all, everybody's getting supported, evaluated in ways that go beyond what has been occurring. Like, so I think that there will be some movement, even with the data focus and everything else. But I'm wondering with what you just raised, so like as part of this discussion, would it work to say, okay, two meetings from now is October 22nd? Would it work to say, Amanda, if you proceed with this plan, you know, to get everyone's feedback approval and then to send the letter, like it would be the hope that by October 22nd, we would have an indication around the, like whether or not we can move this forward through the waiver? And maybe if not, Mark, like at, on October 22nd, maybe we should revisit those Plan, Plan Bs? I mean, would that help to sort of say, like, set a timeline for ourselves? I mean, because realistically, like, I don't think that, I think that would retain options open to us, like if we try to understand by the end of October
Right.
Like where we're at, I think that that's still, I mean, last time, like Anna, when we were doing the search, we were doing interviews in December, we extended an offer in January, and I remember that we were like the first, we were ahead of everyone else in the process. So, you know, I'm just wondering if that would help with what you were just saying to kind of set a goal for ourselves?
Yeah, from my perspective, setting some type of timeline for, just so we make sure we have a conversation on like where, where are we, and where are we seeing where this will land for next year would be helpful. It'd be great if we could have it by the eighth, but, you know, I think the 22nd, or the whatever, 22nd is reasonable to try and get us to that point.
And I think if we, when we send out the letter, you know, we can figure out who to follow up with, with the commission and say, you know, and say, what's realistic, what's a realistic time diet to get feedback in one way or another?
So then it could be because of the calendar, like that's three weeks away, October, because of there being five Wednes, or whatever it is.
Five Wednesdays.
Five Wednesdays in October, I guess, whatever.
Yeah.
That's more, more time than we typically have between meetings, so maybe they, maybe they would be able to get back to you.
Would MASSS and MASC be able to advocate on our behalf as well, separately on their own?
Yes, they've, they've indicated they will do that.
Okay.
Yeah. And they're, basically their timeline starts when we send it out.
Okay.
So we'll let them know the letter went out, and then
They will follow.
They're willing to do outreach on our behalf.
Okay.
Yeah. So that we could get an indication from them as well, based on conversations that they're having, if, you know, kind of what does
Because they've probably done this process of many, many times before.
Yeah, I think the only difference is that the commissioner's new.
Okay.
So whereas previously they'd had a history, now they're just like, you know, it's somebody new. That adds a, you know, it adds somewhat of a
A wrinkle.
Complexity, a wrinkle to it, yeah. But yeah, I mean, I think, I do think it makes sense to have a timeline as opposed to saying like, hey, you know, whenever we find out and then we'll go. So putting something in, maybe use that as a placeholder now. If we get a sense of anything earlier, we can reach out and then adjust as needed, but then talk about it then. So we'd send a letter out, and then say 10/22 is when we would circle back on this.
If not on
If not, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Does, does that feel comfortable to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there anything else, anything else you want to consider? No? All right. So then we need to make a motion, just so that it's not a binding thing, but just so it shows that everybody is in support of the decision that we're moving forward with. So
I can make the motion.
That'd be great.
Motion is made to approve, and I just want to, sorry. Motion is made to approve pursuing an additional one-year waiver for interim superintendent John Phelan.
Second? All in favor? Great. Thank you. Okay, the next item, I believe, is the, I just lost my agenda, finance, yep, this finance subcommittee report.
Finance met this morning. We talked a lot about the budget, so we reviewed the draft budget from last year, the context for this year with Katie, John was not there this morning, obviously, and kind of talked through budget coordination with the town administrator and with the warrant committee. We already have a scheduled meeting with the town administrator on October 15th, where they will come in and present information on kind of revenue and expense projections for the town. Those are obviously very impactful for what that means for our budget. And then we're, we're still just working through the warrant committee coordination piece. Again, the new chair has, I think, doing a good job from what I can see in the viewing of things, but like just trying to get a sense, get aligned with what he envisioned for the committee, and what we are hoping to do in terms of being productive with the warrant committee this year. So moving forward with that, I think the superintendent and the chair of the warrant committee are going to connect when the superintendent returns, and we'll have some coordination on that. We expect to have an updated draft of the calendar for our next finance committee meeting, which is in two weeks, and so once we have that and discuss it, we'll share that with the committee at large, too, and I think that'll be on an upcoming agenda, just to make sure everybody's kind of on the same page as to what we anticipate around that kind of budget cycle.
Did you say October 15th?
October 15th for
For the meeting with the town?
With the town administrator, yeah, at the finance committee meeting.
Yeah.
Then, yeah, so that was the, the primary thing we discussed. We also discussed a little bit about kind of reporting, finalized some discussion on reporting, just like the quarterly reports, you know, what is the information that the committee is looking to see from Katie, and conversation with Katie and John around kind of the standard report, and then diving into details in certain areas of, of kind of question or concern based upon issues that have come up prior years, and just interests and questions from the committee members. So that was good. And we talked a little bit about the budget coordination committee, which we'll give an update on here, too. And that was mostly, mostly the conversation today. Anything I missed?
No.
Great, thank you.
Questions on the finance?
I think you're just going to keep talking, because you're the next up on the school building committee report.
I'll do the motions first for the vendor warrant. So I did forward the vendor warrant 10 and 11 this morning, reviewed those today before and after finance. So I will make a motion to approve vendor warrant 10 in the amount of $542,007.69 payable on 9/11/25, as well as vendor warrant 11 in the amount of $777,088.95 payable on 9/18/25. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, all in favor? Vendor warrants.
Oh, actually, facilities, yep.
Oh, yeah. So our facilities advisory committee met yesterday at the, in the superintendent's conference room, where it was, Amanda's now part of, part of the committee, and we have Katie now also as part of the committee. So we did ask the members if they wanted to continue on, which all of them did, and I checked with Matt, who was not present at the meeting. He also confirmed he wanted to stay on, so that was there. We basically got an update from Tom McCarthy, our facilities director, for all of our town buildings and schools. He said the fourth, the third floor of Cunningham and Collicott went really well on time, they finished, no issues, no hiccups, no change order. I would think there was a small, slightly small change order on something, but very minor. They said they worked really well with, with, because Cunningham and Collicott does run camps and programs throughout the summer, so with all of that, they just worked around it and were in the buildings before the students came in and left, before the students were dismissed. So there was no issues with that, and they wrapped everything up before school started, and I heard the space looks amazing. Still figuring out dates with him for all of us to go and see, might be individually, depending on our schedules, but he said he'll get back to me on that. Then he talked about, like just updates that they did over the summer, they were really busy this summer. Things like the, they had replaced five water bubblers, they had those like not-so-nice ones, they'd put in a few years ago, replaced them with better ones. I know that was a, that was a, an area that we were very concerned about, those water bubblers. So got those, they replaced one of the Glover through PTO, they had the parking lots redone. If you're outside, you see fresh clean stripes everywhere, so they did all of that, slightly wider, too, so they're not as narrow, so it's great. And then repaired the driveway in the back of the Tucker. They put mini splits in the headrooms at the high school, and also inserted a wall between a large high school classroom and brought, broken up into two rooms. They installed pavers at the back of the high school, they had like some sort of
Teastone.
A gravel before that was getting stuck in the doors, and they couldn't really close the door, so they, they used pavers back there, and it looks really nice. Replaced a power unit at the elevator, on the elevator at Tucker. And then the, they, he talked about custodians just working hard to like get the floors all finished and redone before school started, and just kind of working around all the, all the things that were happening at our schools over the summer. That was a, that was a big deal, because there was so much happening, and working around that without any interruption. So one of the things that they're looking to do is the sound system in the auditorium that's going to start in December, and that is going to be, the auditorium will be accessible, but the sound system won't be working for six weeks. So it takes about that much time to like, for them to like, I think it's as old as when the, I believe he said it's as old as when the buildings were built, so they're really outdated, so it'll take some time. So the, just the sound will be down, but they can still have access to the space during those six those six weeks. And then, we talked a little bit about just you, replacing some of the units, like boilers and rooftop units and like, but, most of the schools, with the exception of one of them, are just kind of on like, a, a maintenance plan, so if things break or fix, they, they come in and service those things, so they're just kind of looking at that. So, I mean, these are like, and we also talked about like, some rebate offers at our previous meeting with Alex Haverdeman, and something that he wanted to be interested in as well. So those, those are just discussions that we're continuing to have, that's just ongoing, but, and then, they still, so, I mean, the, the other big thing is, we're moving our meetings from Mondays to Tuesdays, just schedule-wise, personally for me, because Mondays are harder now with, but, and everybody was very kind about being flexible about that, so. And then, we just, that was really, that's all we have, so. But, yeah, and I will definitely follow back up with Tom and get some dates to you guys to come, go see the space. And we're going to hopefully have our next facilities meeting, if you want to come in the space, so that'll be our...
It's a good incentive to come to a meeting.
Well, the facilities advisory meeting will happen at...
Just so we can see the space, yeah.
Yeah, that's so cool.
So, we'll see.
I, I was so lucky, I went to Cunningham Open House, I got to walk the space.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, it's very nice, the hallway is actually wider.
Okay.
Maybe because no lockers on the hallway yet, so it seems a lot wider, the floors, obviously, everything is new, but the light is kind of...
That's, that's temporary.
Yeah, it definitely is something like...
Yeah, so, I think they have, yeah, they're supposed to get it in like, a month or so.
Yeah, a couple of teachers told me about how the, the boys' bathroom is on a different floor, or the end of the hallway, all the way to another side. So every time when they do some kind of messy stuff, like for science project and stuff, they will have to walk all the way to the other floor, or the end of the hallway to wash their hands. So they really hope to have a sink in their classroom, if possible, so.
Okay.
Just want to bring that feedback.
Okay, no, that's, that's really good to know.
But it's very nice, I really like it.
Yeah, and I think in terms of, he also mentioned, like, for what they would like to do is, in the next couple of weeks, start cleaning up the, the fourth floor space, so that they can start ripping up the ceiling up there over February and April break, so that they'll be ready to go when they get, so they're on, on schedule for September, or end of August for, of next year, for the fourth floor space.
Yeah, they really did a great job. Big ground behind Cunningham and Collicott.
Yes, they did that, too.
Yeah, that's new also, it's, oh, so much better.
Yeah, it looks really nice, yeah.
That's great. Great, thank you. All right, school building committee report. Oh, we're, sorry, we have to vote to reaffirm the members, yep.
Okay.
I think we should list them?
Yes. Thank you. Is that a motion?
It just doesn't have the names.
Oh, it doesn't have the names.
Okay. Okay, so I will make a motion to reaffirm the members of the facilities advisory committee, and I will list them. Okay, sorry, so we have Debbie Delmar, Anthony Chikap, Lee Sheridan, Kenneth Sherman, and Matt Marong, as our community members who are part of that committee.
One second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Great, thank you.
It's a great group of volunteers.
Yeah, they are, they're great.
All right, school building committee, sorry. School building committee met on Monday, mostly just, again, an update kind of on timeline and process. We are still waiting to hear back from MSBA. We are in that kind of module, we've completed everything, completed a while ago, but it has to go in front of the board, the MSBA board, to get voted on, to push us into the next module. They're next, they meet every other month, which is unfortunate, so we were not on the August agenda, the next agenda is October, and then December. We are not clear if we're going to make the October agenda, we're not clear if we'll make the December agenda, so we are doing some outreach to MSBA and some elected folks to see if they can help get us on the October, because right now, we are kind of sitting on our hands a little bit until we get through MSBA. So that is, that was that part we did. Also just talked about, and some initial conversations about coordinating with the DCR. Essentially, there's some improvements or updates that the state is looking to do on Blue Hills Parkway, that are very preliminary, but they got kind of flagged for Sean, and I think they got flagged for the town administrator, and they shared them with Sean, and so he kind of walked us through a little bit, like, what this, what the state is thinking, they have a bunch of different options, we're not really sure which way they're leaning, and again, it's kind of very early, but given that is a primary avenue for the new school sites, I just wanted to keep us updated, so that's on our radar, and we can be kind of trying to coordinate with that group from the states. And then also talked about, you know, on Blue Hills Parkway right now, when you come to Guile Road, you have to turn right, there's no kind of brake in the median, and so with the new building there, should we, could we connect with DCR to try and create a brake in the median, to allow traffic buses and cars, in order to improve traffic flows? So that was part of like, the, just some, some initial conversations of, you know, what are some of the things we can be thinking about and doing, you know, regardless of kind of exactly what the site looks like, potentially, you know, that might still be something that would happen, and so, at least have some initial conversations on what that path looks like, approvals would need to be, so we have that whenever we're ultimately able to move forward. So trying to, trying to stay productive and move things along. Those were the updates, unless Nate, there was anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Great.
Any questions?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Budget coordination committee.
Budget coordination, so we elected a chair. Megan Hegarty from the select board is the chair of the committee, and then we selected vice chair, am I blanking?
Leroy.
Leroy, thank you.
Walker.
I'm sorry, Leroy, he's going to watch this, be mad at me. Leroy is the vice chair, and so we, we have that, we talked a lot about just, what is our charge, right, what is the goal of the committee, and so, talking through, is it kind of line item reviews of the budget, is that where our time is useful? A lot of, I think, alignment was found on kind of long-term budget planning, of looking at kind of five-year budgets for the town, town budget, school budget, and what that looks like over kind of a longer period of time, and then also some discussion of, like, we're obviously moving into the current budget season, and so, getting the committee kind of aligned on, you know, what that timeline looks, kind of as a coordinated town, and share budget information. Again, some of that will be kind of duplicate work, that will also need to happen at finance committees, such as the town administrator, I think the report he'll give us on 10/15 will be, at finance will be a similar report, that at some point will give the budget coordination, so there'll be some redundancy, but I think that's just part of ensuring we have strong kind of cross-collaboration, and so that was kind of the first, first meeting. Anything else?
No, I don't think so.
Great. All right, questions? Thank you. All right, so the next item is approval of the minutes for the September 3rd meeting, which are in the folder. If I ever had a chance to review them.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the Milton School Committee meeting of September 3rd, 2025.
Second? All in favor?
I abstained, because I was abstained, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Great, all right. The last thing is looking at the next meeting agenda items, so, meeting with John, we're trying to plan out two to three meetings out for things that will be on here, and obviously, it can be fluid if things come up that we want to add. So currently, we have the DESI end-of-year report, subcommittee and advisory committee reports. I think with that, we would add a vote for the budget coordination committee report, I mean, budget coordination committee appointee. Appointee, yeah, so we would add that. But we have the policy subcommittee, because I know that you guys are meeting next, coming up, that that would be the first reading of a competency determination. For the finance subcommittee, they're looking to have the FY '27 budget calendar at the meeting, that's what's on here. And then, the school building committee, and then, also, one thing that we were missing, that we just talked about, no, that would just be the vote on the committee. Is there anything else that we're missing, that people want to add?
I think budget coordination committee, I think, will meet.
Okay. Okay. I'll add that. Anything else? Wow, Wendy, do you have, you're on the student...
Yes.
Do you have anything scheduled for that?
We haven't scheduled a time to meet, because we couldn't find a common time, so I'm, I'm sending an email to see if we can have a, an upcoming date scheduled.
Great. I think that's it, unless anybody has anything else to add? No?
When is, sorry, when is this next meeting, is it the first, or?
The 8th.
The 8th, okay. Well, I guess, I don't know.
If we have...
Tentatively, a discussion of DESI's response to our letter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can add that if, if we hear from them. Anything else? No?
So, the negotiations subcommittee is going to be kicking off, I guess, next week, in just a pre-planning conversation. So I guess we can sort of see what comes of that, as far as what the timeline is going to be for negotiations, we don't know that yet. I don't think it will be time yet to have that on our agenda at the next meeting, but maybe at an upcoming meeting, or if we have a sense of timeline, we can share that out.
Okay, but you don't think for the next meeting?
I, we'll know more after next week.
Okay. I'll just put it as a holder, placeholder. And I'm just adding in DESI response. All right, anything else? No? All right, last item is, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second. 7:59, let's do this.
Rebecca, all in favor?
Awesome.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone.